of Lake Mills City Council to order for Tuesday, May 6th of 2025. Misty, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Ms. Schmager?
Here.
Mr. Koots?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
And Ms. Quaidnow previously informed staff that she would be unavailable for this evening's meeting.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next agenda item is Councilmember Board Reports and Acceptance of Meeting Minutes. We have quite a few in our packet this evening, April 15th City Council, March 25th Plan Commission, March 10th Parks Board Minutes, March 20th Police and Fire Commission, and we have three sets of minutes from the Zoning Board of Appeals from the last year or so. Are there any comments or corrections on any of those minutes?
Oh, good.
Okay, seeing none, we'll accept all those into the record and we'll move on to correspondence. Greg Koots, would you like to start us off this evening?
I got a couple of emails about the proposed ordinance changes.
Public comment?
Yeah.
Okay. Mary?
I received some correspondence on Sandy Beach, an email regarding the bird flu, questions on baseball field rental process, also some of the same correspondence on the city code for the meetings, and also on shoreline ordinance.
Great. Greg?
Nothing else to add?
Okay, I've had all of those and a few additional that I can add. I talked to lots of citizens regarding appointments to boards and committees, so that was really wonderful and see those on tonight's agenda. I'm just so grateful to all the people who have renewed their appointments that are interested in continuing to serve, and we've got a couple of new folks who would like to serve the city. So thank you to everyone that I had a chance to talk with. Also had a number of contacts regarding City Council meeting procedures, got a couple of updates regarding Club 55, and they've made some changes in how they're operating. I received a presentation on an updated study about Jefferson County housing needs. Received an inquiry about the Joint Rock Lake Committee City Representatives. I received resignation from the Plan Commission Chair Pamela Zaris, which I think that was maybe circulated to council members late today. And then I had a conversation with the Newtown Board Chair Kyle Culo this afternoon, so just introducing himself. So that is it. Okay, thank you, everyone. So next we go to questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comments may also be made on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meetings law discourages actions by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes, state your name and address when starting your comments, and fill out the sign-in sheet at the podium. If there's anyone attending online that would like to speak, please type your name and address in the chat feature, and then the clerk can alert us to your interest. So we'll start in the room. If there's anyone that would like to speak, please come up to the podium.
Hi, Brandy Broskowsky-Duro, 204 West Lake Park Place, Lake Mills, Wisconsin. And I'm speaking tonight about an issue that I've mentioned before about having compliance with our existing ordinances, in particular 660-34. It's come to my attention that a report by Mead Hunt that had been submitted back in 2021 is now being deemed fulfilled when, in fact, the amount of work that was done towards restoration is possibly 25% of the 50% that was required. And I say 50% required because Mead Hunt was very generous in allowing for restoration only being 50% of the hardscaping that had been put in and damaging vast areas of the shoreline that were against the ordinances that eventually a cup had been approved. But then it was agreed upon with Mead Hunt, especially on pages 11 and 12 of his report, that what needed to be done to do this partial restoration, and it was very lenient in that regard, requiring only about 50% of the total damage be restored, and at this point, only 25% has been restored. And I want this to be explained, how this can happen, where a plan can all of a sudden be altered and approval granted when it indeed does not meet the requirements that were put forth three or four years ago. And they've been very generous in the amount of time allowed, and there's still many who would be very willing to do the required work. And that's why this seems a very slippery slope that we are on in Lake Mills to allow, for one thing, damages to happen along our shoreland and shoreline when we have ordinances that protect it, but then to go ahead and allow just for a very minimal type of restoration to amend the damages that have been done. And I really would like to see more inquiry into things like this, and I want Mead Hunt to reconsider why they gave an approval, and is this approval in writing, or how does this process work? Thank you.
Thank you, Brandy. So anyone else would like to speak this evening? Anyone online?
Nobody registered online.
Okay, last call. Anyone like to speak during public comment this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to Agenda Item Number Seven, which is our City Manager's Report, and we have a monthly report from Drake.
Yep, if there's any questions on the written reports submitted, happy to answer them. I would like to note that the Sandy Beach boat launch piers were installed today, so that has been completed.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Mary?
I have a question. You reference in your report that you attended the Milwaukee 2050 event and discussed the I-94 corridor between Madison and Milwaukee, and I was just curious to know if there was anything that you captured based on that discussion that you think would be important for us to know, that we need to be thinking about or driving action towards relating to that particular aspect, given we are right in the middle on that corridor?
Yeah, I think the theme of it largely was just to be prepared as the I-94 corridor between Madison and Milwaukee has been identified by regional economic development groups, both in the Madison and Milwaukee area groups, as kind of the future, the future development zone of the state of Wisconsin, and that the kind of biotech industry of the Madison area and the manufacturing strength of the Milwaukee area are going to continue to grow and improve, and that the quality of life that is achievable in that corridor as far as attracting people who, talented people who want to reduce their commute times or improve their work-life balances, or live in a culture that is different than, you know, the Chicagos or the larger metropolitan areas, but still grow and manage and, I guess, direct significant business that exists in the area, makes it a very attractive place for future development. And so we heard from biotech industry leaders, heard from both the Madison area and Milwaukee area, kind of economic development organization leaders, and then there were roundtable discussions by a variety of different Jefferson County and others that were led throughout the event. So it was well-attended, over 300 people, I think, were in attendance. So there was a lot to learn, and I think it's, that conversation is going to be continuing at several different levels, not just local level, but regional and state, as the housing and employment needs of the corridor are considered.
Thank you.
Greg?
I saw that you were invited to the EMS county meeting. That's of interest, of course, because we're almost three years into the process of our EMS decision. Do you know what the theme of that group is at this point?
I think its general theme is what is the best way for the, how can the county be involved in the provision of EMS services and solving some of the issues that we've had in ensuring that there's adequate EMS coverage? So there's local government leaders such as myself, there are fire department officials that are included, county staff, and others that make up the committee. And this is kind of, I think it's May 15th, May 14th or 15th is the kickoff, and so that'll be where I expect to learn more about the, what our direction is and what the county is looking to achieve out of this. But the general idea is what is the county's role moving forward in EMS service in Jefferson County?
Sounds great. Looking forward to feedback.
Just have a follow-up on that. Thank you, Drake, for being willing to serve on that. If I recall right, is there some state statute that gives counties some authority to have a role? And I don't, and is there any funding attached to that?
Counties can levy specifically for EMS services, and it's a levy specific to EMS services. And so that is, they can levy both for a county-run department, there's also the belief that you could levy and use that in support of local jurisdictions providing EMS services, so kind of be the hub that then distributes out the funds rather than the service provider. But that is their main revenue source, is a county-wide levy in support of EMS services.
Thank you. Any other questions for Drake this evening? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so we will move on to council business. Our first item, Agenda 8A, is a consent agenda. So as a reminder, we have four items that are included under that consent agenda. If any council member wants to remove any item from consideration under the consent agenda, you can say so at this time, otherwise I'll ask for a motion to approve the entire consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, Items 1 through 4.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Waters and seconded by Ms. Schmager. So we'll move to a roll call vote. Misty, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Mr. Koots?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is Resolution 25-27. Misty, would you please read that title for us?
City Council Resolution 25-27, in appreciation of public service to the city of Lake Mills, Steve Fields.
Thank you. So it's our tradition to recognize long-serving council members and committee members and thank them for their work. And we did get to say some personal thank yous to Steve Fields at his last meeting, and I see that he's here on the screen, which is how we got a little more used to seeing him over the last couple of years as he was juggling work and contributing. So I'm going to read this resolution, Steve, and thank you for being here virtually to hear it. So whereas Steve Fields served for seven years as a dedicated and valuable member of the Lake Mills City Council, and whereas as a member of the City Council, Steve Fields served the highest of Lake Mills, served the city of Lake Mills with experience, valuable perspective, and a desire to provide the highest quality of service to the citizens of Lake Mills. And whereas Steve Fields worked diligently and effectively with elected and appointed officials, shareholders, and staff to influence and achieve goals that were important to the city of Lake Mills. And whereas Steve Fields provided conscientious, reasonable, and reliable service that has contributed to the betterment of the city of Lake Mills and its citizens, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Lake Mills, on behalf of the citizens of Lake Mills, does hereby acknowledge and express appreciation for the dedicated public service of Steve Fields. So I'll ask for a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve City Council Resolution 25-27, in appreciation of public service to the city of Lake Mills, Steve Fields.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Waters and a second by Ms. Schmager, and I'll ask for a voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. The motion passes. Thank you, Steve. Nice to see you again, and I hope you're enjoying this nice weather on your bicycle in between, on your motorcycle in between continuing your work.
I will. Thank you very much. It's been an honor serving in the council and working with staff in this council. It was a good time, and I truly enjoyed it. Thank you very much.
Thanks for being here tonight, Steve. Take care. Okay, our next item is Resolution 25-28. Misty, would you read that title for us?
City Council Resolution 25-28, waiver of fees for Lake Mills Optimist Club annual junior fishery.
Okay, can we have a staff summary of this first, please?
Not much to add. This is, I think, the third year of the request for the waiver of fees. This is for the annual fishery by the Lake Mills Optimist Club. It has been granted each of the past two years. The reason a special event permit is required for this event is it does include the exclusive use of a city facility, so we do close down the launch area for this. And so that is kind of what necessitates the special event permit, and you can contrast that with like the Easter egg hunt, which is an event that takes place in the park but is not precluding anybody else from being in the park or using the park. That type of event does not require the special event permit. But exclusive use of a city facility is one of the triggers for when a special event permit is required.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve City Council Resolution 25-28, waiver of fees for Lake Mills Optimist Club's annual junior fishery.
Second. A motion by Mr. Waters and a second by Ms. Schmager. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to point out that it's a great event. I've walked by it a couple of times. I've never been able to participate, maybe because it's a junior fishery, but it seems like everyone's having a good time and it's a good event, so I'm definitely in favor.
Any further discussion?
I just have a comment. I know a year ago, this was on, and I recall my conversation regarding, we have a fee structure, and this one's only $40. So I just think at some time, and I spoke with Drake, an interest in understanding what they are and why we have them, and like the $40 seems almost immaterial. I mean, it's not even the hourly rate of a few people. I'm just curious on how we got to where we're at with some of the fees for special events, so I'd like to learn more about that. Not an emergency, but this does, I have heard it brings in a lot of families, so I haven't been able to attend or to observe, so it's nice to hear your feedback on it.
Sure, Greg. Thanks. Anything further? Okay, seeing none, let's have a roll call vote, please, on Resolution 25-28.
Mr. Koots?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
No.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Motion passes 3-1.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is Resolution 25-29. Misty, would you read that title, please?
City Council Resolution 25-29, accepting donations from Hometown Grocers, Lake Mills Market, in the amount of $2,820.37, and from Lutske's K-9 Foundation in the amount of $5,550 for use by the Lake Mills Police Department to support the canine program.
Great. Drake, you want to tell us a little bit about this one?
Chief Schroder, would you be able to fill them in, please?
Oh, great. Welcome, Chief.
Yeah, good evening. So Lake Mills Market reached out to me in January looking for someone to sponsor for their February roundup, that they do a roundup every month to support a different cause. So I certainly said we would be the person that they could support, and they wanted to specifically support our canine program. So they raised the $2,820 and change and want to donate that to our canine program to fund the next canine that we purchase. And Lutsu K-9 has supported our canine program as well as several others throughout the county. They unfortunately had voted to disband earlier this year, so they had about $55,000 in funds as a nonprofit that they had to disperse, and they chose to disperse that equally among the 10 canine programs that they had been supporting. So this is really a request to accept them and then designate the funds for use towards the purchase of our next canine.
Fantastic. Thank you. Any questions for Chief Schroder? Greg?
Chief, I know that we put a temporary hold on our canine program as Truman, our dog, went into early retirement. What are the plans for the future of this program here in Lake Mills?
Well, I certainly plan on getting a canine. We have hired three new officers who are brand-new to law enforcement within the last nine months, and they have either completed or are completing the basic law enforcement academy and then their field training, and then we're hiring another brand-new officer who will start the academy in June. So priority number one is to get our staff in full and get those individuals trained and out on the road on solo patrol. And then I would envision with four brand-new people to law enforcement, I know there is some interest among them to be a canine handler, so if I don't have any interest from my current staff, I'm optimistic that one, if not more of those four, will be interested in filling that position, and we will identify that person as soon as they're ready and then look at buying a canine.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Schroder? Okay, seeing none, we need a motion, please.
I will move to approve City Council Resolution 25-29, accepting donations as noted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Schmager, seconded by Mr. Waters. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing no interest in that, Misty, can you please call the roll on Resolution 25-29?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Mr. Koots?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is Ordinance 1274, and this is the second reading tonight. So Misty, would you please do the second reading?
City Council Ordinance 1274, amending City Code Chapter 38, City Council, Section 38-3, Meetings, Rules of Procedure.
Thank you. So that is our second reading. So typically, we would move on to have the third reading at our next council meeting. I did want to just note that I received some really good feedback on the original ordinance proposal, and also had a chance to work with Mary Schmager, who was kind enough to meet with me and give me some of her suggestions, and I have drafted a proposed amendment to Ordinance 1274. It's attached to the agenda tonight. My plan would be to introduce it at our next meeting, at the third reading, but I wanted to provide it in advance so people could think about it and see if there's any other feedback that you might have. I've also included an additional memo that summarizes some of the key changes that I've made in response to feedback in that amended version. So some of the changes that are in what's labeled as Ordinance 1274A are that the paragraph that was addressing behavior and conduct during public comment, I've edited that and moved it earlier in the section so that it would apply to the entire council meeting and to all individuals at the meeting. The public comment opportunity is not limited to city residents and taxpayers as in the original version. I've removed the 30-minute time limit, included some language that the presiding officer may limit public comment for some listed reasons, and included some language indicating that city residents and city taxpayers would be given preference to speak first. So also in my second memo is a summary of each section of the proposed ordinance and what is being changed and why, because that was also some good feedback that I got that it wasn't clear always what the purpose was for each of the changes. So I just wanted to highlight those additional items. I'm not introducing that amendment this evening, but I wanted to provide it in advance so that people could have more time to think about it and certainly provide more feedback if interested. So is there any discussion or questions or comments this evening on Ordinance 1274? Greg?
Thank you for the heads-up on the amendment.
Sure.
I didn't notice that beforehand, so maybe I didn't go through my notes well enough for this meeting, but I will review that before the next meeting. I just want to make sure that we give the community a voice, and hopefully the amendment addresses those issues, and looking forward to it, so.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments or discussion?
Yeah, the only comment I have is K-4 and K-2 language. One says we might limit, and one says everyone has a chance, and so there might be just clarification needed as you look at how you've worded those two particular sentences.
K-4 and K-2.
K-2.
Okay, all right, I will take a look at those.
Because you may limit, which means some folks may not have an opportunity to speak, but yet you stated in "for" all speakers shall have the opportunity to participate, so that could be contradictory.
Okay.
Just one observation I had.
Thank you to note. Thank you. I will take a look at that. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, before we go on, is the, will we be voting on all of these as one package or individually when they come up?
Well, it's one ordinance proposal.
It's one proposal?
Yeah, so the Ordinance 1274A or whatever amendments would be voted on as one proposal.
Okay.
Is it, Dan, do you want to, is there anything you can clarify on that, Dan?
The second reading occurred on Ordinance 1274. Basically, right now, Ordinance 1274A, an amendment of 1274, doesn't exist. It doesn't exist until there's formal action that presents that amendment, and then that amendment is adopted, if that occurs. So the second reading is Ordinance 1274. That can be freely amended through this process of going through three readings, and ultimately, I have no idea what you guys are going to adopt.
Thank you.
So we can make amendments in the next meeting on this?
And you can amend amendments.
Exactly.
Just keep rolling.
As long as we make sure Misty can keep up with us.
I have a question. I did have a citizen ask specifically, which I think I could, I don't think I answered it accurately perhaps, but why, when you actually come forward with an amendment at a second reading, why you don't start the counting all over? So, Dan, that's kind of what you were alluding to.
That's literally what my advice was. Prepare the ordinance, go through three readings, and then amend it thereafter. I think Ms. Curler was attempting to just give everybody notice of what her intent is, even though that has not occurred. And I agree. I don't know that that would interrupt the process of going through three readings. It's merely an amendment to an existing ordinance that you're motioning to adopt. But I think to avoid kind of some confusion or grayness there, the process that's been established and going through the three readings with one, and then discussing and amending thereafter is appropriate. So, yeah, I think that's maybe best practice.
I think just to add to that, if you had to, because an amendment can be offered with no advance notice during a meeting, if you had to restart that process of three readings, you could, it could take you months to approve an ordinance change through the normal course of just debate and discussion that occurs at the council. And so certainly a sponsor could choose to withdraw a sponsored ordinance and resubmit it as a first reading again, but just the act of amending something that's been proposed
again, but just the act of amending something that's been proposed would not restart the clock.
Okay. I answered it pretty well. Okay, I'm good. But thank you, because I think others may have that question on, you know, one person asked, so there might be others that are curious.
Lisa, I did have one more question. It's not about the, it's not about the ordinance itself, but more how it's going to be implemented. When it talks about the speaking order, are we picturing, like, the chair, or someone who's taking notes, calling people that have registered one by one, then?
I think that there's flexibility in the language that I've proposed, to do it different ways. The way we currently do it, people sign up at the podium, and then come and, you know, self-identify, and come up and speak. Another way to do it, that I've talked with staff about, would be to have people sign up ahead of time, and then have that list being given to the presiding officer, so then the presiding officer can call people up, and that may be a little more efficient, so you know when it's your turn. And so I think we have flexibility in how we do it, but that second way is a way that I would contemplate.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Any other discussion tonight? Okay, thank you. So then we will move Ordinance 1274 to the next meeting for its third reading. Our next item on our agenda is Ordinance 1275. This is a first reading. Misty, would you read that title for the first time, please?
Order 1275, amending City of Lake Mills Ordinance, Section 660-44/8, official zoning map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, parcel identification number 24607131231000, property address 155 East Pine Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin, owner, Lake Mills School Area District.
Thank you. Can we have a staff overview of this one? Since this is just the first reading, but I see there's no Mr.'s here.
Yeah, I'll go over this one for you. So the school district has a planned expansion. That was the subject of, or one of the subjects of the referendum that passed in April. And the expansion that this ordinance and this proposal kind of encapsulates is the elementary school in the northeast corner of the property. That's the corner of Birch and Pine. There is a setback issue there with their proposal, so they kind of went in a dual-process route to address that issue. The first process is they petitioned for a variance. That variance has been granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals. The letter, I believe, was, it's fit for signing today. I'm not sure if the secretary and the chair came in and signed it, but it will be distributed to the school district, granting a 20 and 1/2-foot variance in that corner. The ordinance reads that because it's a corner lot, they need a 30-foot setback from both rights-of-way, Pine Street and Birch. This variance reduces that in this specific circumstance to 20 and 1/2 feet. So it meets their goal. Therefore, I think this ordinance, ultimately, the one that's in front of you, should proceed as an amendment accomplishing the PIO overlay, the Public Institution overlay, and ultimately, we're going to recommend that we can remove the PDD overlay. Neither, the property isn't overlaid with either right now. The PIO overlay, or PI overlay, is really being driven by staff. I think that that property should have been overlaid with the Public Institutional overlay at the time that the school was redeveloped on the site, the time of the adoption of our most current zoning code. That did not occur. It's appropriate for that property, so staff is recommending that the PI overlay continue. There is no need at this point for the planned development district overlay that's currently proposed in the ordinance. So at some point, maybe after the third reading, staff is going to recommend that the Ordinance 1275 is amended to remove that PDD overlay. Once again, this is really, it's a unique circumstance because of the corner lot and the setback that applies in both areas, the treatment that the school district got before the previous code, or the current code was adopted, and ultimately, what their plans were and what they wanted to do with the property. And we tried to find solutions for them. They were successful in their first crack at a variance, so it kind of just changes the game. That's where we're at. Staff is recommending proceeding with the Public Institutional overlay. Ultimately, we'll recommend that the PDD overlay that's been requested be removed, because it's just not necessary.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? And I would just note that this was reviewed at the last Plan Commission meeting, and it was recommended for approval. That was before the variance was granted, I believe, so it was recommended for...
It happened the same week. It was, yeah, the ZBA met two days after the Plan Commission hearing on the ordinance amendment.
Okay, so that was the first reading tonight. So then, Ordinance 1275 will be moved to our next meeting for the second reading. That concludes our city business for this evening. Are there any recommendations for future agendas from council members?
Nothing further?
We've identified a couple tonight. Drake, anything else you want to highlight?
I anticipate an update on the planning for Sandy Beach, and that I believe we'll be receiving an update from the library director on the library project.
Fantastic. Great. Thank you, everyone. And with that, tonight's meeting is adjourned.